...for tonight, two thousand and nineteen, at three o'clock P. M. Again with a roll called vote of commissioners to begin with Commissioner Pope.
President.
Commissioner Nevin.
President.
Commissioner Barnes.
President.
Commissioner Carter.
President.
And the chairs, let the record show now for the president. Let's stand at this time, I've asked our fire chief, Dean Nevin, to come do the invitation, and Commissioner Pope will do the... Please.
Let's pray right before we pray, I do want to remember Mr. Coda Griner. She was a student at Ware Middle School, she was in the eighth grade, and she passed away with childhood cancer. Her visitation is tonight, and her funeral is tomorrow, so we'll remember that family as well. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, we pray right now for Ms. Griner's family, and, Lord, that peace that passes all understanding, Lord, that you would be with them.
Yes.
Lord, we don't understand why certain things happen, but we know you are a God that never made a mistake, and you never will make a mistake. So, Father, as this month be in childhood cancer month, let's remember all those kids that are suffering with that horrible disease. Now, Father, we pray that everything that will be said and done today will be pleasing to you. In Christ's name I pray.
Amen.
Please join me, religion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming this afternoon, and Ms. Meyer, we thank you for being here, and Ms. Jennifer Hurst, our attorney, thank you for being here today, and all my other special guests that's here, that's here in our meeting. We'll get right into our, uh, we have four, looks like four guests that'd like to speak to the commission, and we'll start off with Mr. John Nevin from Republic Services.
Good afternoon.
State your name for the record.
John Nevin, Republic Services. I just wanted to come by, and if I, like, this year for, uh, maybe make some available, pass out some cards, or if there's any issues, take a chance to go and address them, or if they need to take back, and also continue offering support, uh, childhood cancer, a lot of charities, uh, we're doing a Still River Clean Up, uh, coming up a couple of weeks, also available out there for community involvement events, uh, to happen as well with these programs, so nothing major today, I'm gonna come by, make sure I'm on the bell for y'all, so.
Commissioner, you have any questions? No, I have none. Thank you for coming by. Thank you. Okay, our next guest is Carla King, Executive Director of the Okanagan Heritage Heritage.
Good afternoon.
I think this has been a long time up here.
Yes, my name is Carla, actually, but, uh, Carla Connet King. Uh, yes, I, Mr. Carter invited me to come introduce myself to you. I am the new director of the Okanagan Heritage Center. This is actually my home, or my area, a lot of times, uh, people will say, "Oh, where did you move from?" Well, I was raised in Charleston County, I lived in Bacon County, in Scoffel Town, even though it was Scoffel Town, I lived there for a while, raised my kids out there. But, uh, I'm so glad I'm back here, I did live in Tennessee for a while, in Charleston, but I've come back home, I have children and grandchildren here, so you know, if anybody's grandparents, you know that you follow those grandchildren. But, um, if you haven't been to the Okanagan Heritage Center in a while, I invite you to come on back out, uh, you know that we are a arts cultural center, and that we, we try to, um, focus on our heritage, and some of the people that we serve, of course, is everyone, but specifically, we try to, um, focus on our youth, because they need to know where they came from, and they need to know their heritage and their history, because they're the up and coming leaders, leaders of our community, so that's, those are the people that we really want to reach out to. Um, we are on a twenty acre, uh, area, it's the Winona Park, if anybody hasn't been there, like I said, please come on out. We have the oldest building there in Ware County, which is the Hilliard House, we have a, uh, Waycross Journal Herald exhibit there, we have a lot of, um, exhibits inside as well, and if you are not a member, I'm sure all of y'all are, but if by chance you're not a member, can I give you a membership, Richard? I'll let y'all pass that out.
That's good. Thank you.
And if there are there any questions at all about Okanagan Heritage Center, please con, uh, come and visit us at any time, we're, we're there to serve, and if you have any ideas or any, um, suggestions that you have that you would like to see there, please give us a call, let us know, we'd like to see theirs. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King. All right, uh, the next, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call Ms. Marshall Taylor. Ladies, full gen.
My name is Marshall Taylor, and I live at eighteen thirty-nine Huckabee Road in Jamesstown.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was thinking, or I thought I read in the paper, where a CSX person was gonna be here to speak, did I miss, misread that? Was that?
I don't know what you're thinking about that.
Okay, well, I thought that's what I read, but anyway, what I wanted to say is that we in my neighborhood, we need a way, and I know y'all said it, but I can't help but be leery of what y'all have said, that we are gonna get a way. ABC Avenue, all the way paved, or, I don't care if it's a gravel road, all I want is a way.
Be paved.
All I want is a way to get from our neighborhood up to the hospitals, or the fire police, uh, the fire, the police could come to our area, because there's not one person on this board that would give up one of their loved ones, if you lived in that neighborhood, for seven million dollars. Nobody would.
That's right.
And I just want to put that before everybody, that we're talking about people's lives, and I just don't want y'all to forget it.
Man, we voted last, last week, spent seven million dollars.
I know you did, but I, I'm, I'm so leery of the railroad saying, "Oh, we can't do that," and then y'all knuckle under to it. Now, I'm taking y'all at your word, that you're not going to knuckle under to the railroad.
Ma'am? Yes, ma'am. Hold on, hold on.
Let Mr. Carter go first.
You see me?
I see you.
I don't change, and if I tell you something, you can pour it in concrete. Yes, ma'am. I've been that away eighty-five years, and I don't intend to start that.
Because I believe there is a way to do this, there is a way to get us across Kettle Creek, I don't, not seeing it's got to be where y'all said, but there's gotta be a way to get us across Kettle Creek.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I, I went out, I spent two days out riding and looking, and they ain't, you gotta cross that creek somewhere.
I know that.
So.
But, like I said, I don't care if it's a gravel road with coves, it doesn't have to be a, like, an interstate, okay? I'm just saying, I just want a way across that creek.
Road's a way of escape.
In case one of our neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
Needs to get to the hospital.
Yes, ma'am.
Or, or we need a fire truck.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I experienced that, as I said in the last meeting, sitting on this side of the track and watching a man's house burn, and that's a bad feeling.
It is.
Or life be a option. So, I, I sympathize for that. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Before you go, let me go say what I'm gonna say.
Please.
You know, I, I agree, we made a decision to do this now, some things are out of our control, I do wanna say that now, okay? So, we said knuckle under, I wanna make sure now, CSX, we can't, we're gonna finish, if CSX says we can't encroach on that right away, or anything like that, that's out of our control. If the engineers say we can't do what we want to do across the road on that area, that's out of our control. I still wanna make this work, but I, I don't want you to say that we're gonna knuckle under without us doing.
See, that's what I'm leery of, right there, because it doesn't have to be right there.
And I agree with that, and, and that's why the engineer is going through that process of trying to see where we got to go.
And, and from my, looking, listening to the engineer the other day, a couple of weeks ago, whenever that was, okay, he said he's got, what was it, seventy percent of the, uh, permits, is that what he said? I mean, you understand, I mean, this has been going on for years, and you can understand.
And it's gonna take years to, to, to you can start the work on this, it's gonna take some time.
I know, and I may be dead by then.
I don't want to get overfocussed, I think it's gonna be, at, at the end of the year, or first next year, we're gonna do this, because it's gonna take a while.
I know how that works, I know how that works, I may be dead by then, but there's still people that are gonna be living.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Well, while you're standing there, Mr. Manager, would you mind elaborating on, uh, CSX's position on, about the engineering that we got to go through with those folks?
Yeah, we, uh, we actually have to pay them to review our plans, and we have those, we have this on the agenda for this afternoon, to approve the plan, so we still got to go through them for...
Is this, this, uh, B, down there?
Yes, B, yes, ma'am. It's B.
So, is a, is a CSX person gonna be here?
No, ma'am, they, they typically send these to us, and then we prove it, send the money.
Oh, I see, that's what I read.
That might have been, yes, ma'am.
All right, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Okay, Brother Freddie Smith. State your name for that address for the record.
Thank you, Sir, Freddie Smith, seven oh six Cherokee Circle, Waycross, Georgia. Nice to see you. Yes, sir. And I think this dear lady from Kingstown has indicated something of what I'm here for, is to address the issue of infrastructure. My particular interest is the overpass on State Street. I pastor a church just beyond it, on Blackshear Drive, across the street from Heritage Center, and, um, I know what it is for me sometime to get there, I know what it is sometime for our people to get there. I come today to tell you, and to, to dito the fact, that I am a hundred and ten percent in favor of that overpass on State Street. It could be on your agenda, it could be far beyond where I think it might be, but at the same time, I think that we need to be encouraged that this needs to be done. I've heard that Genoa Street might be an option, but, uh, and I'd like to address that, I would not be in favor of Genoa Street. Genoa Street is a two-lane street, plus it's putting people into a residential area, or the people are gonna have to eat their way out of residential area, of unnecessary traffic that they needed to be there. Then Albany Avenue, which is still two lanes, puts the people farther out in resolving the issue on State Street. I'm not in qualms with the railroad, my dad was a railroad man. Railroad fed me, put a shelter over my head, took care of me, put, helped me go to college, so I'm not, I'm not here to activate their railroad, I'm glad they're here, I know that it's an issue for us to deal with, but there are ways in which to deal with it, and the overpass is one of them. Now, the other day, I was going to the church, and I had to bypass five crossings, from Hibberville, Blackshear, uh, State Street, Genoa, Albany, five, not just to the moving train, a slow-moving train, but a part train. There again, I'm glad they're here, but I think it behooves us, as leaders and citizens, to address what, how we can resolve this for our people. I know, and in the paper, I think, Jimmy, I read, where, um, you might not be too much for it because of the business issue, I, and, and you're entitled to that, and I'm not here to take issue with that, but, but at the same time, there's hundreds, and probably even some thousands, who pass on that State Street a day, that are inconvenienced to get to their home, inconvenienced to get to their work, and even the safety issue. The overpass on State Street needs to be a high priority for us, in Ware County, and I just wanna come this afternoon as a pastor and as a citizen, not to fuss, nor to complain, I just wanna come to be an encourager, that we need to move on this project. And, uh, these projects that are too big for us, and we're gonna tackle some projects that are too big for us financially and even in the planning, we need to reestablish a relationship with DOT in Atlanta. And I think what this lady said a minute ago, of her concern about, uh, cowering out, or, what'd you say?
Knuckling under.
Knuckling under. I, I think, well, you, you can nod your head on that, but I think Ware County and Waycross has developed a reputation, that we can start a project, and if it gets too uncomfortable for us, we'll back out on it. Now, we got that reputation in DOT in Atlanta, and I don't like that, and I don't like for you to have that reputation, and I think that needs to be corrected. We're in South Georgia to the point that Pope, we're gonna get, we got to go get, they're not gonna come and bring it to us, and I, and you understand that, they're not gonna bring it to us, we've got to go get it, simply because there's a lot of big cities in Georgia that are vying for that same dollar. We've got to be active with that, if we're gonna get it, and we've got to be heard from, if we're gonna get it, and we've got to get people up there who build a relationship with DOT, and who can bring it back to Ware County, so I wanna just come and say, I'm a hundred and ten percent for the overpass on State Street.
Thank you, Brother Freddie. Is that our last? All right, uh, Mr. Manager, let's start with...
One thing that we do need to add, and I think the county attorney can speed to this, the resolution, we need to add to the day's agenda.
On the loose one?
The loose one, yes, sir, on the courthouse annex of the foreman.
Yeah.
So, we'll need to add that as a matter of record.
Okay, we'll put it at the end.
Yes, sir. That might be interesting.
All right, Adam May, what's your name?
Okay, Senator Adam May is, uh, an appointment to the Waycross Ware County Development Authority Board, uh, I believe Ms. Janet Dyke is here to speak to that, although, I don't know if there's any questions about the candidate for that position, so Ms. Candace Rice.
Thank you, Manager. Each of you should have Ms. Rice's resume, as well as additional information, and, um, Ms. Rice has expressed interest in serving on our Board of Directors, and the presentation request is made on behalf of the WWDA Board of Directors to you. If you'll remember, this is an appointment that you guys made in two thousand and eighteen for Mr. Alex Cordellius, Mr. Alex had to step down because of his schedule, uh, the appointee that we put in his place also had a little bit going on with some agricultural , uh, things as well, and had requested to not serve on it, actually, the same day that you guys voted on him to serve in that capacity. And, uh, after talking with Ms. Rice about the appointment and the responsibilities that coincided with it, we've also reached out to the Board of Education, have gotten the clearance from the superintendent, as well as the principal of the high school. So, if it is your desire, we would like to have her as in addition to our Board of Directors, which we'll put that a hundred percent on our Board of Directors at that time.
Okay. Who is the one that, to, for his position?
That was Mr. Garrett Bass.
Yeah.
And, like I said, he, he never really came into the position, it was one, literally the day that you appointed him, he called and said, "Hey, I need to step back from it," so it's just kind of set back a little bit.
This is, uh, Mr. Landis moved as a doctor, actually.
Yes, sir, um, well, it's, I can't tell you the lineage, I'm sorry, I'm not from here, but, um...
Lanis Siski. Lanis Siski.
It's my sister. George's. Oh, okay. I do have some connection.
But again, we are excited and hopeful, because she, she does kind of tie the agricultural sector, as well as the educational sector, to the Board of Directors. Mr. Pike, did you have a question as well?
Uh, just gonna say, this is a position you normally would like to hold up, agricultural representative.
Yes, sir, we do try to keep that position, because that is a huge economic impact in our community, and we are aware of that, and so we, we have in the past tried to keep that position filled with someone in that industry, but of course, it is the choice of the commission.
The chairman, I contacted Ms. Rice yesterday, and she's, um, ready, willing, and able to serve, and I recommend we put on the agenda.
Commissioner, y'all okay? This lady to serve on the industrial development. That clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jen. Oh, wound you up there, while, while I, I wanna say something, this lady has been, she's our new, uh, president of the Southern Industrial Development.
So, it's, uh, the state, is the state director for the Southern Economic Development Council, which is comprised of a seventeen-state, uh, group of my peers, and it'll be a one-term appointment, and then if my counterparts so choose to appoint me one more time, that'll, you know, be a second term, and then I'll be on the executive board for that council.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Adam D.
Okay, Senator Tabby is a preliminary engineering agreement with CSX, uh, for their review and approval of the ABC Avenue Extension Project from Blaylock, uh, down to Wake on the Drive, and that includes the Kettle Creek Bridge, uh, in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred dollars. One thing I need to point out is that I've contacted our CSX representative about this agreement, um, he's gonna meet with his superiors to find out if there's any way that we can get a reduction, or some sort of discount, um, or work something out, so, uh, I don't know if we might want to do this contingent upon it not exceeding the forty thousand seven hundred, and that way, if he comes back and we're able to get less than that, then we can move forward, and so we don't slow the project down.
So, we don't stop it?
Yeah, we're basically setting the max at what they're asking for, and then throughout the next few days, hopefully, I'll hear back from him, and then we can get that resolved.
Commissioner, y'all okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Y'all okay with that? Okay, that clerk?
Got a question, um, this would hopefully, any design work here would only be looking at overviewing the design of Mr. Long, is that correct?
Yes, sir, they also may propose some design changes through their review, they may come back and show something that they want different, and then send that back through Trent Long, yes, sir.
And the long-range goal of this contract is to hopefully get their approval to use their right of mind.
Well, yes, sir, but there's gonna be other costs associated on top of this, uh, we'll have to pay for one of their flagrants, uh, and that'd be, that's gonna be quite healthy, so, we don't know how long that project will take place, but I understand every day they're working, they have to have a flagrant, so, there'll be other costs associated along with what they're charging here.
This is a step in, in receiving approval to use their right of mind.
That's right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anytime you date with CSX, they're gonna pass the money there looking at you. If they do recommend...
If, if they do recommend design changes, so, our engineer will have to make the design change.
That's right. They'll have to, you'll have to agree to it.
Yeah.
A party will have to agree to it.
That's right.
Okay, Adam D.
Yeah, Adam C. Uh, this is the, uh, warrant contract to underground excavation for the replacement of Indian Mount Church Road Bridge, uh, in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars. This amount is actually being paid out of our Egg Milk, Egg, L-Pig account that we, that we awarded, I think that is right, correct, correct? Yeah, just wanted to make sure, but, but these projects aren't run together after a while, but, uh, this is a L-Pig project?
Got to explain to the crap on L-Pig here.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's the, uh, local maintenance improvement program through DOT, we're allotted based on our road mileage and our population, so, we roughly get now, we get about a million dollars a year, I think it's just shy of a million dollars, and then every year it grows.
Okay, any, any more questions? That clerk, please. All right, Adam D., Mr. Manager.
Okay, Adam D. is, uh, approval of, of proposed drain adjustments for the way home and proof of street and drainage project improvements, uh, you'll have it attached there, um, we haven't had this recorded yet, it's just officially approved, the heasement for drainage, and then once it's approved, then we'll go through the process of having it reported.
Okay. That clerk? Okay, Adam B. Long awaited.
Okay, uh, Adam E. is the warrant bid to Thre- Thre Brothers LLC, for the street and drains improvements to Cypress Street, uh, in the amount of one million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. We're working on other issues associated with this project, and, uh, but we, we don't expect that to slow us down any, so that way, hopefully, in the next few days, we can check all the big requirements, and then go from there. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, okay, questions? Any questions for the manager? Okay, that clerk, please. Adam F.
Okay, Adam F. is a request from the Superior Court for Court, uh, Ms. Melvin Flymash, to, uh, purchase some shelving for her office, actually across the hall where the tax commissioner's office used to be, and this is shelving that is being purchased off state contract, is the, more of the automated type of shelving with, on the track system, in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, uh, is somebody purchasing cooperative with the Government Services Administration, and this money's coming from our two thousand fourteen squashed account. This is the same type of shelving we purchased for the probate court and such.
So, this be going in the old tax office office?
Yes, sir.
Is that area gonna be used totally for filing, or?
Uh, no, it's actually the back section, as you walk in, and where the vault is, take a left, in the back, all of it's gonna be in that back room, uh, except for a little small area, but, uh, pretty much the whole room's gonna be used for all that automated shelving.
We're sure we recommend that you know about this shelves?
I, I recommend it, I know that, that definitely needs to be done, uh, not only that, but ones that are, she's currently using her office, some of them are not operable, they have to manually move them now, instead of turning, you know, it's got the wheel that actually turns, because they're, they're loaded, uh, from floor up to ceiling, uh, but I, I strongly recommend this because of the situation where they're at now, with some of them not fully operational.
Okay, congratulations. Any questions for the manager?
Since this is a government strategy, you can't have your beat now?
No, sir, it's all that, it's all that, uh, purchasing, it's already been out, they just provide the numbers.
GSA administration. Any, any further questions for the manager? Where you go, okay, place this on the agenda. Where's the manager? That clerk? Okay, I seen, Mr., we had one man raise his hand. This, uh...
Yes, sir, I'm, you don't mind, I'll let the county attorney explain this situation, so that way maybe it'll be better understood.
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, yes, the Georgia statutory law allows for a courthouse annex to be established, um, and so, uh, for the new juvenile court, that's simply what this resolution is meant to be.
To be moved from where it's at over to the old bank building. Y'all okay with that?
I don't think you do.
That clerk, please. Now, we have, Mr. Tanner back there raises his hand, I didn't want him to thank him. Mistress, it's not only the agenda, but y'all approve for him to speak.
Yes, sir, I've got one, one thing I need to mention, I'll be talking about.
Hold on this. Let him speak first, anyway.
This, uh, ABC Avenue, uh, and, and as critical as it is to everybody, why don't we ask that our engineering people give us a monthly report, that we can give to the people, see where we at, and what any steps that we got to cross? Is that possible?
Something written, just so that we can pass it out to people. Yes, sir. Sure.
If, if that took care of it, if I, he'll, he'll take care of it.
I just want to read your green and ready on that road.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way to get railroad to help pay for, um, the wall, the town, uh, being its own, it's gonna be holding back their rock?
We've asked them a number of cases. Yeah. We've asked them on a number of occasions what they might assist with. Uh, we've been told, almost as a fact, that the only way they might contribute something if we were to close a crossing. They love to crow, to close crossings, and that's about the only way you can get them to be interested. But we've tried. We've asked for numbers of things, but.
I just went to my house at two thirty-five when I hit James County, Blaylock, a train. That train creeped, it was two and a half miles long. It took me thirty-five minutes to get here because when I finally got across Blaylock, I had to beat it up near State Street. And instead of waiting on the State Street to curve, I waited on the Blackshear Avenue to curve. Then I had to go around. One of y'all's transit buses parked right in the middle of the road. Block in the highway, where nobody could go around it, sitting there waiting to pick somebody up.
One of our buses?
Yeah. Where came the transit? Sit right there, right there in the middle of a ton.
Now, that's a part, well, two, the terminal, that's a brush.
Bad enough that we gotta go around, but so we're waiting on the downbeat, let's park there and pick somebody up. But there again, it's a safety issue. Y'all know this. I told those you, Jimmy and Steve, all of them, every time I turn. And just like State Street, we've talked about this over the past, until we've ruined the place. Every one of these people agree with me. That's why I heard you're talking about it. Did y'all sign the resolution to give the state to Mr. Prushay to take it to Atlanta?
Yep. I just, I sent you a copy, and then I sent you the.
Just gave two, three months ago.
Yep.
So that is in.
Individually signed.
Yep. We're all on the same private. Maybe something to get done.
And we signed, we signed papers on Jordan Drive to, what was it, Tarnish, Tarnish Road, what, three, four months ago?
Same as before.
It's, it's our property.
As anybody.
They don't get in a hurry, right? You know, this commission is doing their part. We don't own the land that we asking them to let us pay the roof on, majority of it.
Maybe you'll buy the land through the railroad. They don't like to wait on the rail. Because half of what you're gonna have to use down near Kettle Creek belongs to me. Railroad by the way stopped by their base mile away. So you ain't gonna buy railroad ground there if you want to buy mine, which again, I told you, you ain't giving that far from the spot. It's not, I thought it was against my goal. There on State Street, has any of y'all ever called about Austin to see what it cost to call that over, that overpass cost?
You wanted our, we wanted our.
Yeah, has anybody ever called the county over about Austin, said, hey, how much did y'all overpass cost?
We did. They told us not to remember the amount.
It was ten million dollars. That did not include, that was just construction, no by-the-way acquisition.
Okay, so that's a lot.
That's way lower than people believe.
That's about forty million dollars worth of.
You've got a lot of variations on this project out here, so we don't know exactly what the design is gonna be.
Okay, there's another one going up in Haysburg. That little town there, they're building a overpass, that's a pretty, from a river.
That's a Tia project, and it's eight million dollars.
Okay. That'll give y'all something to go by. Just go over State Street, one little old railroad track, come back down and go across the. Work with the state.
That's four lanes.
Yeah, work with the state. But seriously.
Hey, they, they, they ain't waiting on us. We ready now. We need thirty-five, forty million dollars, I think, I reckon. Did he tell you that?
With Jimmy, two or three weeks ago, you put in the paper that you wouldn't vote for because of the mess of Quail Business.
At that, I'm glad you mentioned that. At that time, they was gonna mention about crossing Kettle Creek. I wanted to go over there and look and see if there's more avenues of crossing Kettle Creek beside, right beside US One. That's why I said, listen, I want to go look, and I did.
Well, while you was out there, you up the road behind Flash Food Church, there behind James County, and look at the stumps coming up by the road, by the height, it'll throw you off balance when you hit that stump out there on the paved road. I told you about the grass the other day, growing into ditches where the water has to run out into the rock roads.
Our, our super devil, Patrick.
I know you, Ms. Wood, is right here. I emailed him the other day by bringing some birds of Tamar's lane, being it's the county road now. They graded it the other day, and now the water's running down the middle of it, and it's worse than it's ever been. If you'll drop the dirt, I'll take the period. At least I can build it. I told him to do it.
Can I address that?
Yes.
Do you wanna bring that up? The email I got, no, the email I got was he wanted the dirt, he would drag it down his driveway. I said, no, I did not send the dirt.
Did you go with it? Say it?
The email that you sent me was requesting three months of dirt dropped in the road, and you'd drag it down your driveway.
No, down my driveway.
That's the email I got.
No, you did not. I got down here in my. I don't own my driveway. My driveway, my driveway, I think it's a lot bigger than my driveway. I think.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, let's circle us up. Thank you. I think we.
Thank you.
We got good value.
But then you know where everybody stands, Jimmy. I'll let you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They sure do. And we gonna let, we think that our efforts resolve the issue, but it ain't gonna happen overnight. We talking about big money. We gonna use the watch back to man.
This is fact, very good.
Yes, sir. It sure is. You pay pennies, everybody pays. Maybe you and nobody. Okay. Commissioner, if y'all have anything, sir.
I got one. Commissioner, where are we standing at on B of Road?
Uh, we need, good question. We need to have, uh, an executive session, talk about numbers of things, and we need to talk about that subject at the same time.
Today?
Let me assure y'all, any of you, that ABC is not going to sleep. It will not go to sleep. And if you work with us and be patient with us, we can get that road. But there's so many hoops that you got to jump through till it beats anything I've ever seen in my life. Used to, we could go out and build a road when I was with DOT. Now you can do everything but build a road. You got to go see if the mockingbird is still mocking. You got to see if the frogs are still jumping. You got to see if the pitcher pump is still growing. Everything in the world except build a road. And after about five or six years, maybe ten years, you can start on a survey for it. If they'll give you a routing that you might can go down. So, you know, you, your road building people don't have the flexibility that they used to have by any shape of the imagination. You can't even imagine where it's at now compared to what it was. And we've all allowed it to happen, me and you and everybody else. Because we've sat back idly by and let tree hubbers tell us what we can do. I'll probably hear about that tree hubber. That's all right, too. But, uh, I'm still in the road building business, and I'm gonna be in the road building business long as y'all keep me up here, and if you wanna fire me tomorrow, that'll be all right, too. But we're not gonna stand down on your roads. We're gonna put your roads forward. If you just give us a little patience, a little time. I'm not talking about a year or two either. It takes years to do these things. You know, these, these people that got these other overpasses, I can assure you, they've been on three years. Thank you.
All right. Better than anybody else. Thank you.
Only that we need to have, uh, have an executive session. I don't know if people will do it now or after the regular meeting, which should be.
Yeah, it's just twenty thirty-nine. Adam.
Adam, Mr. Chairman.
Adam, Mr. Chairman, can, can we enter into the executive session from a?
A work session? There, uh, is a lot of disagreement across the state, I would say, with county attorneys on that. Um, specifically, I believe the statute does say meeting. Um, however, uh, there are many boards across the state, and many of our boards, and Tony historically has advised our boards that it's okay going to an executive session during a work session. The same type idea, of course, you'll want to, um, you know, state the reason and make sure it's an allowable reason under the statute, all those different type things, but yes.
Okay, my question then, technically, how can you make a vote to go into executive session if we can't make votes on the?
And, and that is the, that is the exact, um, point of the, the, the people who take the contention otherwise. Um, that is certainly one of their points, and, um, Tony and I have had this discussion on numerous occasions. As we often do with many, you know, many lawyers will sit and they'll read the statute, um, you know, differently, but, but the rationale and protections behind the executive session, of course, you know, the statute lays out certain areas that you can go into executive session for. You wanna make sure that you're in a properly called meeting so the, you know, the, the community's aware that those, um, those aren't happening. The same type protections are in place for a work session, but to your point, during the work session, we would not be taking a vote to approve an agenda item. Um, and so, you know, that idea of not being able to formally do that. So historically, I can say, we have advised our boards, you can go into executive session during a work session, but your point is well taken, and, um, the lawyer in me certainly appreciates that.
But that being said, I still recommend that we go to the after meeting. After, after regular meeting.
Sorry.
But don't take the vote on.
All right, I have a motion to the General District Court session.
So move.
I got a motion here. I'm thinking about the measure of vote, I'll wait until I say no. There are John and I.